See here, apologies. Okay, I think I'm recording. So Mark, please begin and I will unmute you. Oh wait, one second.
Okay.
Oh, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'm here. And you're gonna transfer the...over to my desktop?
Yep, I'm gonna make you the presenter. Make presenter, yes.
Uh, Rain, I'm on?
Yes, you are on.
Okay, I'm assuming I am.
Yes.
Okay, great. And everyone can see the first slide. And Rain, I'm gonna take my cues from you on that. Um, so anyway, it's great to be here. Uh, I'm Mark Lied with Resource Media, based here in Seattle. And, um, I've been working with the Power Pass Coal Campaign for four or five years, um, and also since the outset of the Stand Up to Oil Campaign. And Resource Media, just briefly, we're like a nonprofit kind of communications PR shop. And Rain asked me today to share some, uh, some recommendations and tips on how to make your testimony, you know, clear, compelling, and memorable. Um, and kinda just wanted to start out by saying that, you know, let's, you know, keep in mind that your audience for this, of course, is gonna be, you know, the officials who are up in front of you, who are taking the testimony. And also, given that this is gonna be, you know, a hearing room, we're open with a lot of people, that, um, you know, the crowd is part of this as well, the people attending the hearing. And obviously, with just, um, you know, two minutes, um, they're gonna keep things moving pretty quickly. And so what we're gonna cover today, I'm gonna say a little bit about kind of the key components of, of what we think we need in the content, a little few tips about how to deliver that, and then we'll get to the other presenters and have some time for Q and A. So in terms of the...to start with the content, as Rain mentioned, um, two minutes is not a lot of time. And just to give you an idea, is, uh, you know, today, I kinda timed out how many words you can use conversationally in two minutes. And it comes out to about the length of a letter to the editor. So sort of 250 to 300 words. So that's really not a lot of time, and there's a few kind of key things that we think it'll be most effective for everyone to get in. Um, and the first one of that is, you know, to highlight one of the key impacts, as you know, there are many, um, and also make sure that everybody states that, you know, those...that impact cannot be mitigated, that speaks directly to the DEIS, and of course, we all wanna see the permit denied. And we want that to be on the record for everybody. Keeping in mind that, you know, you're gonna have an opportunity to submit comments in writing, either at the hearing itself or online afterwards. So by no means do you have to limit, um, those comments, obviously, to two minutes or 300 words, but that's what we wanna...that's what we're gonna need to do at the hearing. So one of the ways that, you know, Resource Media, we like to...we particularly think about this when we're kinda crafting a message or a story, um, then I think this works effectively for testimony as well as for media interviews. And some of you may find yourselves in front of reporters, or they may be...if they're at the hearing, or they may be drawing or quoting from what you're saying. And so the way we like to kinda break it down in a really simple, easy way is, you know, you establish the problem or threat, um, we all have a pretty good sense of what those are. What are the values at stake? In other words, why does that...why does this matter? And then a solution. And, um, you know, those three elements together can kinda make up...you can think about framing your testimony around those three key pieces. So to start with, uh, you know, this is...when you speak to values, whether it's how your family's gonna be affected or your community, um, you know, the dangers of oil trains speak to our security. The potential impacts on local businesses, or the maritime economy of Gray's Harbor speaks to the value of prosperity. And when we're talking about things like climate, we're talking about, you know, what is the legacy that, you know, we're gonna leave for our children and grandchildren? That's obviously, um, you know, a long-term, um, issue. Um, but it's really with these, you know, when you speak to sort of core values, that's where you establish for, for, you know, your audience, really what's at stake in this. Uh, when we talk about, you know, another component of this is obviously the threats, which is gonna be a major focus of everybody's testimony. And so you can see that we know that there are a lot of various different threats. We're gonna be really asking people, I think, given the length of time we have, to focus in on one thing. And I know that, you know, that's not easy, um, there's a lot that we all wanna talk about, about this, but we're really asking people to, given the time, um, that we have to work with, to focus in on one element or one impact and then try to...and personalize it. So, for example, the first three pieces here, human health, public safety, and quality of life, you know, those, those all relate to oil trains. And if that's the issue that affects you most, or that you're most passionate about, um, you know, stick to that sort of one issue. The health of Gray's Harbor, the oil spill risk, as we all know, Gray's Harbor, maybe of anywhere where these, um, terminals are sighted, the kind of potentially devastating consequences of an oil spill, also the limitation of the Gray's Harbor shipping channel, subject to strong currents, uh, it's very long, um, yeah, 20 miles long, uh, not a great place to stage tugs and barges. And we're talking about, obviously, a huge increase in the number of potentially oil barges and oil tankers in Gray's Harbor. And, you know, one way to think about that would be, um, you know, there's the...obviously, there's the environmental piece of that, but there's also the fact that, you know, the Gray's Harbor maritime economy is such a huge part of the county and the region. Some other impacts are obviously property values, um, that may be a reason why...one of the...a major reason for some people to be concerned about this. And then obviously, the bigger impact, climate. And I think it's, uh, you know, really important, um, we talk a lot about storytelling, we obviously don't have a lot of time, um, in the testimony to do this, but I think it's really important that you try to personalize the impact to you. And what's on your screen here is just an example from an article, I believe it was in Mount Vernon a couple of years ago, about the, you know, concerns about the huge increase in coal trains, obviously, this applies to oil trains as well. And you can see here that, you know, this is a very simple, relatable way to talk about this, that Jeff Jacobs, you know, he's concerned about the effect that it's gonna have on, obviously, on his community, but particularly his family and his kids. And this is just a very brief anecdote, and if, um, you know, you can...if you can come up with one of those that is particularly personal to you, I think it's, it's a really great way to just personalize that impact, make a connection, uh, with, with your audience, with the people at the hearing, and obviously, the officials that are gonna be, you know, sitting right in front of you. And then finally, we get to the solution. And, um, you know, this is sort of a pretty simple, obviously, but something that's really important, is that what we want out of this is that we...we don't want the terminals to be built. And again, the impacts, and the impact that you were talking about can't be mitigated. And, you know, oftentimes, um, for example, the long-term solution to this issue, as we all know, is we need to start moving away from our dependence on oil. We're starting to do that already, that's the long-term solution. But in the context of, you know, the DEIS and our testimony and these hearings, we really wanna stick to those very simple pieces. We don't want the terminals built, and the impacts can't be mitigated. So just a quick review of this again, um, I just think, you know, this is a very easy, simple way to kinda frame your testimony. Why does this matter? What are the values? What are your main concerns? How is it gonna affect you and your community? You know, what is that threat? And then obviously, again, the solution, that we can't mitigate these, and we want the state to deny these permits. So shifting gears just a little bit, um, obviously, that's the content piece of this. Um, the next part of it is delivery. And I think one of the most important things we can do, particularly, again, when you've got two minutes and you can, you know, if you're more...some people are very comfortable writing down bullets and kind of speaking off the top of their head. For some of us who are not as comfortable speaking in front of a crowd, I think the way...part of the way to do that is to practice. And again, this speaks to the time limit, to write this out, write out your testimony, again, 250, 300 words is maybe a half a page, and just practice it. And, um, a few times, and that'll help you obviously be comfortable up in front of a group of people, and you can focus on, on your delivery and kinda your state of mind and being comfortable up there. Uh, as part of that, um, you know, we all tend to, you know, we've got two minutes, we wanna sometimes cram as much in there as possible, but really so that, you know, it's clear to the people in the room, clear to any media that are there. You probably wanna be...pay a lot of attention to kind of the pace and how quickly you're speaking, and generally, uh, we wanna slow that down a little bit. And then finally, uh, again, this is where the practice comes in, is, you know, we don't wanna be as much as possible reading directly from, uh, from a script, um, you know, don't wanna speak in a monotone, but modulate your voice, make it as conversational as possible. And then obviously, make eye contact. Um, you know, this is, uh, seems obvious, but I think, um, you know, we're...part of what we're doing at the hearing is making an impression on the people that are right in front of us. And, you know, that speaks to practicing your testimony so that you can look around at the officials, you might even wanna turn around at the audience, uh, of people gathered at the hearing to, to make a particularly important point. And so, you know, just remember to make that eye contact. And I think that's, um, that's pretty much covers it for me. Just remember, again, you're limited to two minutes, you're not gonna have all the time you want to, to say everything, uh, that you want to. Um, and just remember that you can bring your full comments in writing or submit them online. And I think with that, I'll turn it over to the next speaker.
Great, thank you very much, Mark. Any questions, please type it into your chat box, um, and we'll monitor that. Next, I have Rebecca Ponzio. And give me a moment to unmute her or make her presenter. And Rebecca, can you hear me? Hey, Mark, Mary has a question.
Okay.
Can we submit more than one comment?
Um, I'm gonna...I mean, I think, um, if we're talking about the different impacts, um, you know, in verbal testimony, you know, I think, again, I would recommend sticking to one of the major impacts, not that you can't mention others, but it would have to probably be in passing. And if the question is related to...I mean, and again, Rain, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, that, um, you can submit this in writing as well, and that doesn't...yeah. I think you're...is there a limit, Rain, to the written comments?
No, definitely not.
Okay, so I mean, I think they can be any length, and that's where you can back up or, you know, speak directly to the, to the DEIS and what's in it, if there are facts and figures that...and there will be, that you don't agree with, or that you have other information on. Um, I think they can be as extensive as they need to be.
Yes, and I know, um, like, our organization and Arnie Martin from...this is from Clean Harbor, I know Arnie's got 40 pages of comments when I last talked to him, so it could be But in terms of a two-minute testimony, you're most effective by sticking to one issue, as Mark has explained. Okay, we're still waiting for Rebecca to provide some more intel on the failures and gaps of the draft EIS. And Arnie is also online to provide some intel. Any other questions for Mark at this time? While we just wait another second for Rebecca to reconnect? Okay, I gotta text her and tell her to connect to audio. Maybe, uh, Arnie, I'll give you the microphone.
Well, I didn't really have too much to say, Rain, but, uh, since last time I...on one of these things, I managed to put in about 20 one-page comments without any trouble in, in the website. So I suggest many people can get most of their stuff into the website with...without any difficulty. And I just typed it in a Word document, submitted a one-Word document for every comment that I had.
Great. Yeah, so what are your findings right now on the...in terms of the gaps or your analysis of the draft EIS?
Well, I thought they...I thought they did a pretty good job, better job than I expected with, with this, but, uh, they didn't, they didn't hit some of the deficiencies of the railroad very hard, and they put...they rely on some upgrades that may or may not be built. And one of the things that I plan on commenting about is the deficiencies of the railroad. It's not...it's a Class Three, the Class Three or Four Railroad built to Class Two standards as of 1900.
I'm sorry, Arnie, can you repeat that?
I...what I said was, I think the, the railroad is a Class Three Railroad or Class Four Railroad built to standards that were right in, in 1900, but they're not much anymore. And there's, there's one, one place you can't fix anything. That's not, that's not me doing my washing, incidentally.
I tried to unmute everybody, so Rebecca has a chance to talk, but seems like she's still not connected. I think she's having some difficulty. Well, I...I'm gonna share my screen, my desktop here, so people can actually see some comments that were written by Kristen Boils from Earth Justice.
Rain, can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
That was more challenging than I thought.
Okay, well, let me mute everybody for a second, then unmute you.
Uh-uh.
Okay. All right, Rebecca, you're on.
Sorry about that, everyone. So Rain asked me to provide, um, some specifics on various areas of the DEIS. This comes from Kristen Boils with Earth Justice, who is doing a very thorough analysis of the both, the strong points. Rain, you are not muted, by the way. Rain, you are not, you are not muted, Rain. Um, of the strong points of the DEIS, as well as the weak points. And I wanna echo what Mark said in his presentation, you really only have two minutes to do this testimony, um, so it's important to choose one point that you wanna make, whether it's about the rail congestion, whether it's about commercial fishing issues, whether it's about oil spills, and speak on that issue, and speak from your heart. Articulate why you're speaking on that. Are you a fisherman? Are you...do you live in Spokane, and these trains go through your community? Are you living...or do your children go to school right next to the train tracks? Are you a birder? Whatever it is, um, why it brings you here, focus on that one specific thing, because a list of issues within two minutes will get lost. It's way more powerful to focus. The other key point that, um, I wanted to make before I get to some of the details is, this is a friendly audience. It may not feel friendly, but it is. These agency folks, their job is to receive testimony and, um, take the testimony into account and finalize the, finalizing the environmental impact statement. So it's not, um, it is better to use sugar than salt in this situation and really speak from your heart. So a couple of the, um, pieces to highlight, and I'm happy to answer other questions if I'm not getting to the specific things that you wanna talk about and see if I have some information on it. The draft environmental impact statement does acknowledge that there are many impacts associated with these two terminals that cannot be mitigated. The, the key terms here are "cannot be mitigated," i.e., you cannot, um, fully address them, and that they adversely significantly...so adversely and significantly impact the resource or the, um, the community. And the draft environmental impact statement actually acknowledges that. So they talk about that around rail traffic, how rail traffic would increase the risk of an oil spill or explosion. There's no way to mitigate that. They can try and reduce the likelihood, but in the end, if there's an oil spill, you can't mitigate it. One key point on that is the, in the last, um, in the last, in 2014, in only summer of 2014, there were three separate train derailments with grain and other non-hazardous material near Hoquiem on the same tracks that would carry the oil. So these tracks are very decrepit, they have a history of derailment. If those derailments...if those trains were carrying crude oil, that would cause an impact that cannot be mitigated. Another key piece that the draft environmental impact statement admits cannot be mitigated is the impact on commercial fishing. So commercial fishing would be affected by the increased oil tanker and barge traffic. Um, the, the document does not go far enough in describing what those impacts are, but it does say that those are impacts. And that, that's ground enough to actually deny the permit. The...so one thing you could highlight, if you're interested in, is the local jobs and the longstanding way of life are at stake because of these terminal proposals, so the commercial fishing, the recreation fishing, the tourism, et cetera. Another thing that is, um, highlighted within the draft environmental impact statement is the impacts on salmon and other fish and wildlife in Gray's Harbor. So although the draft environmental impact statement finds that the risk of an oil spill is low, um, which can be totally debated, uh, you cannot fully mitigate those risks of those one oil spill happen on fish, on salmon, on birds in Gray's Harbor. Thinking about climate change, if, if some folks wanna hone in on that, the draft environmental impact statement does talk about climate change, but it is only focused on Gray's Harbor, um, the impacts of climate change within Gray's Harbor. That's a pretty inadequate analysis of climate change. So one tactic you could take is, if you're interested in climate change, for example, say, the draft environmental impact statement inadequately reviews the impacts of climate change of these terminal proposals, and you're requesting that Department of Ecology and City of Hoquiem go back and do a more thorough analysis of the greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation of these crude oils, the combustion of them at the site, and then the final combustion when they're actually used. For those folks who are more interested in respecting tribal treaty rights and tribal culture, um, the draft environmental impact statement does find that there is a risk that all those resources within the, um, treaty trusted resources are at risk. I would say the draft environmental impact statement is inadequate in how, how it characterizes that, but it's important to say, this document actually acknowledges that you cannot mitigate for those risks. I ask that you deny this permit.
Rebecca, this is Rain.
Another key...
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna try doing something. I'm gonna make myself a presenter, and so everybody on the computer can look at the document that you're referring to.
Right.
And I just wanna make sure that you don't get cut off.
Okay.
So, uh, so let me try that and make myself presenter, so I can show my screen.
Okay.
And now you can continue talking.
Okay, I can still see...I can see your screen. So why don't you highlight the economic impact, so she's gonna go to that, um, which is too above that, too above where you are right now. The economic impacts, the draft environmental impact statement, um, is completely inadequate in how it assesses the cost-benefit analysis essentially of these projects. It only hones in on the benefits of the jobs associated with the terminal proposals, not the, um, cost to the existing jobs. So that's another angle that, if you're interested in taking, you could, um, very squarely and very confidently talk about, that the draft environmental impact statement is completely inadequate in how it assesses the cost-benefit analysis of these terminals. It does not take into account tourism, it does not take into account, actually, even other port facilities, like the, um, fishing terminal in Port West, in, um, Westport, that enables Dungeness crab fishing. So there, there's a lot of wiggle room there to speak, um, if you're interested. The, um, if you're more on the public health, uh, which is just above the economic impact piece, that is, um, the, the draft environmental impact statement gives us some information about who lives near the tracks, but it is narrowly scoped to Gray's Harbor and the short line from Chehalis. Um, that's the, that's the analysis that it looks at. So those coming from outside Gray's Harbor, please, you know, you could take the approach of speaking, um, from the gorge, or from Spokane, or other places, or Vancouver, that you live near the track and you are impacted by these trains as well, um, through, and have...it will have public health implications in terms of the diesel, in terms of congestion, in terms of not allowing you to get across the tracks, et cetera. Those are, those are a handful. The, the document that Rain is showing is a really great, um, tool, and we can distribute that. We're not gonna...we probably won't, um, I don't know, we have to make a decision about whether or not to put it on the website, but for anyone, we could send it to all these people, all of you who are on the call. We will also have it at the hearing itself, at the hospitality suite, to use as a reference. But I would, um, and so it's kind of a cheat sheet, I guess, if you will, to the DEIS. And what, what, again, I would recommend is choosing one issue, one issue that you care about, that you can speak to from your heart, and backing that issue, or backing your points up with content as much as you can from the draft environmental impact statement, which this cheat sheet should help you do. And, um, and any other facts or studies, they did not incorporate all the great information that is out there on the impact, the health impact, the economic impact, the ecological impacts, the oil spill impacts, et cetera. They did not... ecological impacts, uh, the oil spill impacts, et cetera, they did not incorporate that. So, if you have something like that, that is compelling to you, reference that in your two-minute testimony, um, and then keep the more thorough comment to the written format.
Excellent. Yeah, I don't see any questions in the chat room, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna be bold and unmute everybody, for those people who are just calling in by phone, uh, have a chance to, um, ask a question. Uh, all right, everybody is unmuted, so the, the floor is open, we have 20 callers on, so please be respectful. I hear somebody tapping away on a keyboard, but any oral questions? Any comments? Anybody want to share a quick story? I see Susan Drumhiller is online, can you make a few comments on what you see up in Sandpoint, Idaho?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, hi, Susan.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great, yeah, I, I muted my, my as well. Um, well, you know, I was just thinking about this, I, I think I'm gonna focus my comments on water quality, you know, the potential, you know, uh, you know, we've got rivers, we've got a big bridge that crosses our Lake Ponderay here, and we've got an aquifer that, that's the critical water supply for half a million people, um, that's at risk, you know, in the Coeur d'Alene, Spokane area, so I think, I think those are some of the things I'm gonna focus on, but, you know, all this stuff about, uh, impacts to communities by, uh, the rail traffic is, is really relevant here. Um, so, you're right, I mean, it, it's kind of hard to focus in on one thing when there's just so many impacts.
But for you, Susan, um-
Yeah, but Susan, you're-
Oh, I was gonna say, Susan, for you to travel all the way from Sandpoint, Idaho to Aberdeen, uh, or Elma, I can't remember now which one, I think you're coming to Elma in a couple days, so-
Elma, yeah.
I, I think your presence there is gonna be really felt and appreciated.
Great, great, um, and I hope that we can do this also for the upcoming, um, uh, public hearings in Spokane, you know, for, um, you know, a couple other projects that are coming up, you know, the Tesoro Savage, for instance, because I think this is a really awesome webinar, I just wanna, I just want to give you guys a kudos for doing this, because I think this is really helpful. Helpful to me, and I'm sure we would love to get more people involved from Sandpoint and something like this, um, at a, you know, in the hearings closer to home.
Great, definitely, thank you for that feedback. I would just add, just listening, Susan, to what you were saying, um, that you wanted to speak to, you know, um, the water quality pieces, the, there are so many relevant topics here, um, there's so much to speak to. Please feel like the, coming to this hearing, it is, um, your presence and you honing in on a particular issue does not decrease the importance of all the other issues that are surrounding these terminals, and that's what the written comments are for in conjunction with the oral comments. Um, the oral comments in part are to demonstrate that we collectively, the big diverse set of people care about this issue, and they care about it from all these different angles, and then we all need to follow up with the, the, the written comments. Um, and I, I know it's hard to, um, it's gonna be hard to squeeze things into two minutes, so it, um, it's important to, to do both, and not feel like your oral comments are the only shot you have.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Rebecca, thank you, Susan.
I have a question.
Please, ask away.
I've never been to, um, DEIS public hearing before, um, who exactly will we be speaking to asking questions of? Will it just be the environmental people, or is it, is Westway and Imperium, are, are there gonna be representatives there? I have no idea, and I'm sure, uh, a lot of you out there have been to many of these.
I, I would expect that, um, representatives from the, um, proposals from the businesses will be there. They're not going to be sitting up front, um, who sits up front to receive testimony are Department of Ecology and City of Hoquiem representatives, they're kind of, they are, they're the central focus, um, but I would imagine, um, in the other public hearings that I've been to, um, both scoping as well as draft environmental impact statements, um, they, they always like to have a mole there, um, agency representatives. I think we will, we will see to the extent, what extent they go to, um, for example, at the Shell, at a Shell hearing, Shell refinery hearing up in Anacortes, that company actually trucked in, um, uh, people who work at the refinery. This is a pretty different situation, um, but, so I, I don't, I would be surprised if they do that, however, people do work at Westway and Imperium already, um, we might, we might see some of those workers in the audience. Other, you know, other people, this is not just an environmental issue, and we have, it is, um, really important that, that diverse set of voices are able to speak on this issue, that's really the point of this public hearing, um, from a first responder perspective, from a teacher perspective, from an elected official perspective who's freaked out what, about what they would have to do if this actually occurred, from a tribal perspective, et cetera. So, um, the hope is to have a set of diverse voices.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question here from a listener. Does the EIS address public safety impact of an event similar to a electromagnetic explosion and fire? I.e., what plans and procedures does Hoquiem Fire Service have in place, and will they be adequate?
Yeah.
So, maybe Rebecca or Arnie could address this?
Yeah, Arnie, Arnie, do you want to take this one?
Sure, there, the Hoquiem Fire Department has basically no equipment suitable for this. The DEIS says that the, that the projects will have all, all the necessary equipment, uh, however, it also states what, what they should do in the case of a fire explosion, and is, they should run for the hills, but, uh, I don't know that, that's gonna happen. Uh, they, we have, we have nothing, uh, suitable for that. If you had an oil refinery fire, they would have pumps capable of, uh, tens of thousands of gallons per minute, we have nothing like that.
I would add, the draft, the document also talks about, um, training, well, it talks about training the Chehalis tribe, it talks about training the, um, Kona Indian Nation fishermen who are on the river, it talks about training different jurisdictions, which is kind of crazy that they're putting that responsibility on others for the risky business that they're, they're proposing, um, but a lot of the mitigation that they're proposing associated with the risk of a spill or an accident, um, focuses on training, and some, some additional resources in terms of cashing or putting, um, putting fire suppressants, et cetera, in various areas, but it is, the, the DEIS does acknowledge that you cannot mitigate an accident like Black McAntique, um, it's just, it's too big.
Good answers, everyone. Okay, well, if I don't see any questions on the chat box, or hear anybody speaking up, I think we could conclude this webinar, and look forward to doing this again at future dates on various upcoming public processes like Tesoro Savage in Vancouver, and the Shell Refinery Permit, um, public hearings in common periods up in Anacortes. So, thank you, everyone, for your valuable time, and look forward to meeting all of you in Elma or Aberdeen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rain.
Yes, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.